Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lincolnville Selectmen's Meeting. It's March 11th, 2019 at 6:02 PM. Before we get going, David, could you read the quote?
Certainly. "The man who smiles when things go wrong has thought of someone to blame it on." Robert Ball.
Thank you. We'll open the floor for the Citizens Forum. If there's anyone out there that's got something that they would like to talk about that's not on the agenda, the floor is yours. Not seeing any stampede, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the Administrator's Report.
Just to let everybody know, nomination papers for Selectmen, School Committee, Budget Committee, and Five-Town CSD Board are available now during normal business hours at the town office. It requires one to have at least 25 valid signatures, but no more than 100. So if anybody's interested in elected position, now would be the time to step forward. Those have to be returned. Can't remember the date, in April, but April 5th, I think. Those are on the papers when you come to take them out. Come get them now. Just a reminder for everybody that second half taxes are due in April, early April. And on a different note, trash bags. We had a little, well, we don't know if we had an issue with our inventory of trash bags or not, because we didn't have a very good inventory. We have instituted a new and different system where bags are accounted on a weekly basis now and reconciled with what we think we have or what we think we should have. We vote since the start of the fiscal year, which was July 1, we're short $45 worth of bags that we can't account for at the moment. But we're not really sure we had the perfect inventory to start, nor the bags that we were getting from Midcoast, if those were short or if they sprouted legs and flew away. But...
It could be interesting. Being the person that I am, place of my place of employment, the bags, the boxes are not always 100% correct.
Yes, we heard that.
I have counted them and I've found them, once in a while I've found them, bagged them or awful. Where so, but I mean, either way, it's an error, you know?
Yep.
And it happens.
Well, we do sell a fair amount here, and I don't think we ever counted the ones coming in, so that's now...
So there's now a mechanism in place to...
Yes, we're doing a weekly inventory and reconciling that against the sales, so...
Okay, thank you, David.
If there's any strangeness going on from this point forward, we will know about it. No, it's of short order. Outside of that, I would anticipate that roads will be posted soon as the weather is changing, and if you happen to live on a gravel road, it could be a tough week coming up as the frost comes out. Outside of that, everything's on the agenda, I think.
Okay, thank you, David. Next item on the agenda, meetings and announcements?
The two meetings will be here at the town office. Recreation Commission is scheduled to meet Monday, March 18th, 6:00 PM, and the Board of Selectmen meets next on Monday, March 25th, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, upcoming community events? Does anybody got any events they wish to announce? Nothing? Okay, next item on the agenda, meeting minutes from February 12th and 13th, 2019?
I move that the board approve the February 12th, 13th, 2019 meeting minutes as presented.
Seconded. Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Meeting minutes for February 25th, 2019?
I move that the board approve the February 25th, 2019 meeting minutes as presented.
Seconded. Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, liquor license renewal application, McLaughlin's Lobster Shack?
I move that the board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by McLaughlin's Lobster Shack.
Seconded. Motion's been seconded. Any discussion?
I would note that Mr. McLaughlin is here.
Mr. McLaughlin is here. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Was that by written invitation?
No, well, that was a request.
Oh, okay.
Rosie started that, like, three years ago or something like that.
Has the motion been seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, liquor license renewal application in at Ocean's Edge.
I move that the board approves...
Representative here as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead.
All right. I move that the board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by the Inn at Ocean's Edge.
Seconded. Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda, liquor license renewal application, Black Horse Inn?
I move that the board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by the Black Horse Inn.
Seconded that. Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? David, I noticed there's not a representative here. Was there any communication?
Yes, Francis is actually in New Jersey and was unable to attend, and...
I did not. I'm sorry. Any more discussion? All those in favor? The motion is passed. Next item on the agenda, liquor license renewal application, Celador Winery?
I move that the board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by Celador Winery.
Seconded. Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? I...
I'm here.
Okay. We do have a representative from Celador Winery. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Motion's passed. Next item on the agenda, application for BYOB permit on 6/1, 2019 at Celador Winery?
I move that the board approve and sign the BYOB permit application submitted by Sue Parkhurst for the June 1, 2019 event at Celador Winery.
Seconded. Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Motion is passed.
Mr. Acting Chair?
Yes.
Just note, you probably see that on your agenda that the public hearing for the special amusement license was actually advertised for 6:30. So I don't know if you want to jump down to, in number 12, I told Gary, probably wouldn't be on until 6:30 if he was coming.
Seeing that that is an advertised hearing, if the board doesn't have any problems, we'll jump down to item number 12.
Or 14.
Or 14.
Whichever you want.
Let's go to 12 first. Supplemental charge, Lakes and Ponds Committee, I believe that was left over from last meeting? Is that just documentation? Is that what that is, David?
Yeah, I did send that to Gary Ulesian, who read it and thought it was fine. He indicated he would come to the meeting tonight, but I didn't, I'd given him estimated time of just after 6:30, thinking the other things might take a little bit of time, and he just listed it.
Oh.
I don't know if you want to address it or wait till he...
Okay, then, that makes sense with what you're trying to get me to do there. Okay, then why don't we skip over that one, and we'll go to number 14, consideration of potential town meeting articles?
Yeah, so we are preparing for June, believe it or not. Got to get to the right page in my own stuff. In last June, we had a question for the voters regarding the land use ordinance with shoreline zoning changes that were, the voters adopted. Prior to presenting that to the voters, we sent the draft to the state shoreline zoning coordinator, because the rules have to be approved by the DEP as well as the townspeople, but they won't approve it until after the voters have approved it. But they will look at a draft, so we sent them the draft, which they said was fine. We presented it to the voters, the voters adopted it, we sent them the formally adopted version, they sent back a conditional approval. Which is a little frustrating, to say the least.
I thought that was all...
Yeah, so...
Excuse me.
And what they wanted us to do, so our ordinance is fine, but they wanted us to make a revision, which basically strikes out a bunch of language regarding timber harvesting from the table of land uses and then the definitions section. So rather than have a special town meeting to do that, we thought, what better time than wait till next June? Here we are approaching June, and, excuse me, and we had the changes drafted, which you'll see is basically consists of a bunch of strikeouts, and that needs to be voter adopted, as well as having a public hearing held by the planning board. We've tentatively scheduled, assuming this is acceptable to the board, we've tentatively scheduled the public hearing for the planning board for April 24th, and then it would be okay to present to the voters in June. So a couple of questions for the board with regard to this. One, are you okay with the language as proposed? And then, two, if you are, do you want to have this voted on by secret ballot on Tuesday or the open floor meeting on Thursday? Again, typically, we do the ordinance changes have, if they were major and substantial, had been voted on by the ballot on Tuesday, whereas this just consists of a bunch of strikeouts that somebody might be like, what are you doing? And nobody, unfortunately, is going to show up to the public hearing. My recommendation would be to do it on Thursday at town meeting, and we could actually explain to people why they're voting on land use ordinance amendments again. So there, I'll stop talking on that one.
I'm good with that.
I would be in favor of doing it at the open meeting.
Okay, so land use ordinance, you don't need to make any particular votes on this stuff tonight, it's just, I need to know so we can plan with the ballot printers, what we need to plan with the ballot printers, and do all the other background stuff and get the hearings scheduled. So we'll do that on the open portion. The other issue is regarding a parcel of land that the town has acquired and a property interest in for non-payment of taxes. It's on the Scopa Road. It also has lien issues filed by the Internal Revenue Service and the State of Maine Department of Labor and perhaps even the State of Maine Revenue Service. In all likelihood, those, based on what's happened in the past, those people will give up their claim when we end up in court to seek a quiet title action. But we have a lien-acquired, municipal lien-acquired property ordinance that sets forth a procedure that I would say was antiquated and didn't provide a good return to the town versus doing a quiet title action. And we have in the past, relatively recently, every time we've had one of these issues come up, we've gone back to the voters and said, instead of doing the procedure in the lien-acquired ordinance, can we just bypass that and do a quiet title action? And the voters have granted that to us. So that would be my recommendation with this as well. If the voters chose not to approve that, at town meeting, we would go back to what was set forth in the lien-acquired ordinance and follow that procedure.
I'm sorry to display my ignorance here, but what is a quiet title action?
When we do, that's not an ignorant question. There's probably many people at home that have that. When we, when somebody doesn't pay their taxes in a timely fashion, the town starts charging them interest after the due date. And then, so let's use this past year's taxes, for example. The board committed those in August. In June or July, we will, so they were due, half was due in October and half is due in April. So if you don't pay on time, we start charging you interest. As of June or July of this coming year, no, the year we're in, sorry, if somebody hasn't paid either half of those, or owes us any money on those taxes, we'll file a lien with the Registry of Deeds. What that does is it alerts anybody that might be interested in acquiring that parcel that there are non-payment of taxes, and that they want to make sure that they deal with it during closing, because if you don't, and the lien goes with the property, so if you sold your property and it had a lien on it, the new owner gets saddled with that responsibility. Eighteen months after we file that lien, if somebody doesn't pay their property taxes, then the town has an ownership interest in that property. You no longer own your property, it's an automatic foreclosure. The quiet title action, go, in essence, we file a court action to say to the court, have we done the proper procedure? You know, that's a pretty heavy hand of government to take somebody's property.
Right.
And it's a confirmation by the court that the town has followed the proper procedures, notified the appropriate parties, and everything was done appropriately, and then the judge will confirm that the ownership interest has passed to the town.
So that quiet title action is the final step in that whole process?
Correct. You don't have, the towns aren't required to do a quiet title action, but if you go to sell that property at some point in the future, a buyer is typically more willing to pay for something with a better...
Clean.
Clean title to it. In this instance, this property owner also had liens filed against the property by the Internal Revenue Service and the State of Maine Department of Labor, and as I said, maybe Maine Revenue. So there are a number of parties that are interested in the property or have a claim, and by going through the quiet title process, those people get notified. If they want to come assert their claim in court, they can. Property taxes have a higher, have a higher standing, so the judge, not a judge, but judge usually awards it following a certain criteria, and, you know, we jump, property taxes jump mortgages. So if somebody had a mortgage on their property, then typically, we have to notify the bank that somebody's going to lose the property. Typically, the bank will pay their taxes. But in this case, there was not a mortgage on the property, except for the IRS and State of Maine.
Oh, so the property tax kind of trumps everything, so then it's in the bank's interest to pay the property taxes off to the town before they...
Correct. But if the bank's not in, if there's no bank involved, and in this case, we have to, we have to then, if we were to sell our interest in this property, somebody's going to say, oop, the IRS is interested.
Right.
They have a claim against it. Oop, the State of Maine is, you know, we're going to get pennies on the dollar.
Right, right.
If that, in going through the quiet title action gives us, we'll take care of, we'll satisfy, the judge is going to say, sorry, you don't have the claim anymore, your claim's no good, hopefully, to the IRS and the State of Maine, and we will then be declared owners. Is that a long enough explanation?
No, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that, too. I'm good, I'm good with this. Getting a draft article from the Texas?
Yeah, okay.
We've got to do it.
Not do quiet title action?
No, I'm good with it.
Oh, do it, well, that's part of the, okay.
Yeah, in essence, we're last, right now, we still have a couple minutes for the 6:30 hearing. Right now, we, we, the town, John, have a municipal lien-acquired ordinance, which means if we acquire property for non-payment of taxes, we're supposed to follow these steps that are set forth in the ordinance. Experience has shown that that has not always yielded the best return to the town. It does not provide for a quiet title action. It basically says, we're going to advertise our interest in the newspaper and sell it to the highest bidder, but the highest bidder has to be above the amount of money that we are owed. Quiet title action gives us, in this case, to be quite honest, I don't think anybody's going to bid when they go do any research and see that the IRS has a lien against the property.
Yeah, right.
Because the IRS's lien is actually quite a lot of money, and, you know, it's just so convoluted. And in the, I, I think every property, I'm trying to think if, during my time here, I don't think we've ever sold and followed that ordinance. We've always gone to the townspeople and said, this is what we'd like to do and why, and usually, they say, well, it makes sense to do the best we can for the town and recoup our monies.
All right, so I think we're good with that.
Okay. It's almost 6:30 on my clock. You want to do the warrants?
Yes. If we could go back to, so you want to do the payroll?
I think you ought to save the supplemental charge till after the hearing, just in case Gary's got voluminous documents he wants to discuss.
So the next item on the agenda, treasurer payroll warrants?
And we do have a Coombs-Griffin, I think it's Coombs-Griffin.
I move that the board approve the treasurer's payroll warrants and the Coombs-Griffin.
Can you see what that top one is currently?
It says special warrant, but I can't see which one.
Get a treasurer's special warrant.
Yeah, that's one. Open that up if you would.
Kayla gave that to me. I didn't look at it. I don't know if it's Coombs-Griffin or...
Coombs-Griffin.
Okay. Seems like I always have coughing fits at every select meeting.
Alergic to this.
Did I get a second? Okay, motion's been seconded. Any, any discussion? Okay, no discussion? All those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you.
I think it's 6:30.
6:30? Getting, getting close.
Shall I tell the applicant it's 6:30 and get her in here?
Yeah, we can get her in here.
Will you be waiting for somebody to complain or...
No. It might, it might have a question.
You might have any questions.
It might not.
Okay.
Okay, so the next, next item on the agenda, public hearing, special amusement permit, Celador Winery?
I move to open the public hearing concerning the special amusement permit application filed by the Celador Winery.
Hearing the motion, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion?
Do you want me to give a brief explanation?
Yes, could you, David?
Yep. Once again, the Celador Winery has applied for a number, has applied for a special amusement permit for a number of events to recur at their facility on the Youngtown Road. All the events and the times comply with the ordinance regarding the issuance, suspension, and revocation of special amusement permits, and a representative is here if you happen to have any questions beyond that.
Are there any questions or concerns? Not hearing any. I feel the, I feel the public hearing, hearing could close.
I move that the board close the public hearing.
Seconded. Motion has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I move that after having held a public hearing, that the board finds that the application submitted by the Celador Winery complies with the standards set forth in the ordinance governing the issuance, suspension, and revocation of special amusement permits for the town of Lincolnville, and the permit be granted.
I second that.
Motion has been seconded. Any discussion? Or any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming over the team.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can go to the next item, which is the supplemental charge, Lakes and Ponds Committee, item number 12.
So this is just a follow-up to your last meeting, or two meetings ago, when Lakes and Ponds Committee gave an update, and then last meeting where you asked Gary to come back to discuss an education outreach program regarding the unencapsulated polystyrene issue. Tried to capture the board's sentiment and for efforts, and sent this to Gary, who looked at it, and is here to tell you what a great job it is and how his committee's ready to go, whatever else he might want to tell you, or answer questions, or...
Well, I'm Gary Glesian, Chair of the Lakes and Ponds Committee. Glad to be here again. I had a good conversation with David about the things that we could possibly do with respect to public outreach, and we tried to capture them here in the supplemental charge. We think the most pressing issue is a direct mailer that would go to the lakefront property owners, and this would be a cover letter with an attachment of either a brochure or a page or two explaining the situation and what lakefront property owners can, can do. Another item came up in our conversation, and that was, we might want to use this opportunity to include some other information for lakefront property owners, perhaps something on best management practices for septic tanks, for example. We could, in a first-class envelope, probably include a brochure plus some other information, so that's something I'd like to run by the Lakes and Ponds Committee and get any thoughts that you might have in including some other materials that would be important for the, for the lake. including, um, some other materials that are, would be important for the, uh, for the lakes. What we'd want to do is to try to get the mailing out as early as we could, hopefully during the month of May, so that people could read it and see it before they were putting their docs in for the year, so if they wanted to make any changes at that point, uh, they could as well. I think that's fundamentally what we've, uh, what we've got here. Uh, we're working on a prototype now for a brochure. I think that we've got enough funds in our current budget to cover. We've looked at the cost of, uh, mailing envelopes, pre-stamped mailing envelopes and labels. And we actually counted up the number of, um, taxable properties around the lakes, and we have three hundred and ninety-six. But it's our guess that, uh, many of those properties may have, uh, the same owners. So, we think our mailing will be, oh, maybe three hundred and fifty, something along, uh, something along those lines. And to get, uh, envelopes and labels for, uh, for that many property owners would be approximately, uh, three hundred dollars. Um, if we go with black and white materials, there won't be much in the way of additional costs. But if we do go with, uh, a color brochure, it would be more expensive. I checked out the prices at Staples, and to have a two-sided colored brochure would cost on the order of, uh, say, four hundred and fifty dollars to, uh, to, to print up. So, we're gonna take a look at our prototypes and see if we can get the information across in just black and white. I'm hoping that, uh, that we can, 'cause that would save, uh, save the town some money.
What was the consensus of your group about the colored versus the, the obvious?
Well, when we first talked about it, everybody thought color was a great idea. Because it would communicate better, you'd be able to see the, the blue encased polystyrene. Um, but at that time, they didn't know it would more than double the cost. So, I haven't had a chance to get back to them on that issue.
Any other questions? Nothing? Thank you, Gary.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move that the board approve inside the supplemental charge to Lakes and Ponds Committee concerning the unencapsulated polystyrene flotation.
A second.
Motion's been seconded, any, any more discussion on that? Got nothing? Okay. All those in favor? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that's.
Thank you, Gary.
Glad for doing it. I feel like, it's like one of those things that most people know that it's actually cheaper to go with the encapsulated. It seems like it might actually take care of itself more than it would ordinarily. I know we're past the discussion.
Yeah, I, I think you're right.
You know?
I was thinking, I was thinking.
Like, if it weren't for that, I don't, I don't, I, I don't know, maybe it would require some other sort of, maybe encouragement or enforcement or something. But I think it's just the education alone, might just do it if they, if they go, oh, really, this is.
Well, I think that's what the, the theory of that is, get the education, get, get the info, information out there. And I think a lot of it will take care of itself.
I think so, too, I think the only issue will be for people who have no plans to change out their existing doc. And that's what the Camden ordinance did, it said, five hours out, if you haven't done it, you gotta do it. Then it can be a pretty substantial expense.
Yeah.
For someone to put in a new doc. But to the extent that somebody knew coming in, or someone is changing out it anyway, it only makes sense to do it, and it's good for people to know about.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay, so, David, do we want to leave number thirteen, uh?
No.
We don't? Okay, so, next item on our agenda, uh, number thirteen, or deliberations, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty budget deliberations and recommendations?
Wait right back.
Yep.
Well, John's out of the room, I'll just tell you that, uh, you requested some information from the library and some additional stuff, info from the fire department on the truck rotation schedule and maintenance costs. And those came in over the weekend, so you didn't get them in your packet, but you have them at your station tonight. So, the, I'm not sure, I'm, I was a hundred percent sh- and you also asked for some info on the, um, original versus the organic plan for maintenance at the hall fields. Think from the last time, we made all the changes to the budget, so the budget now has a new date on the lower left-hand corner, this is March ninth. The, the issues that we weren't sure, or no, um, particular direction was given, were the athletic fields, um, and the library, I think we might have put the library in it, but we don't have athletic fields money included in the, or the recreation requests included in the Slackman's budget. Recommended columns, and I don't know if you wanna go through this all again, you wanna focus on those items, what your preference is.
I think one of the reasons that we, uh, didn't, uh, go any further with that is Chair Dunn had some, some concerns and wanted some clarification on a few things, and I think that's why we didn't go any further than that. Now, I know we're coming right up on a deadline to get this back to the, um, get this back to the Budget Committee. And we need to do this for ourselves, but, um, I myself am looking to hear what she had for thoughts, um, on that. And I think, most importantly, it had to do with the, um, the switch from going to status quo to, um, to going green. I think she wanted a comparison of what was actually gonna be changed to go in green. And I think she wanted to look at it before we made that commitment.
Well, you do have another meeting between now and when the Budget Committee is scheduled to review this, so if you wanna postpone those decisions till the twenty-fifth, you're certainly.
But they have to be made on the twenty-fifth.
Um, yeah, it will be right up to the eleventh hour at that point.
As far as the information from the, um, from the library, um, I think that was for consider, just consideration. Uh, we ask everybody for a budget, you know, and their financials, so, um, you know, I haven't had a chance to look at that, so I don't, you know, I can't really speak to that. Uh, I don't know, I know everybody else has a copy of that on their desk, you know, on their desk here, but that just came tonight, so I think in all fairness, we should probably, um, table that until the next meeting. Uh, unless the rest of the board, uh, and I think, maybe I'm, maybe I stand to be corrected here, but I think Josh also wanted to look at that. From the, from the Rec Committee, so, um, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks on that, but that's my opinion on that.
He, Josh wanted to look at the, at, at this, uh.
At the information that was requested for the.
Oh, for the, for the organ, pesticide stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, I, I listened to that last night, the last meeting, that was right, so it was like, wha- what is the organic pesticide?
Exactly.
It's pesticides, pesticides is, I think it was the glyphosate was the big.
Correct.
And, and the, isn't there a question as to whether that's still in these products, or is that, or it's a different product altogether? But what is it, what's the trade-off?
Correct.
Right. Yes, that would be good to know. Um, how do, how do we get that informa- I mean, is this a matter of just calling up sports fields, or, or just, well, we've got the names of the products here, interface?
Yeah, I don't, I, I certainly don't mind, um, gathering what, you know, I can get from sports fields, the, some product data or MSDS sheets or whatever. Um, if you look at the, what's labeled the current program versus the organic.
Yeah.
If you look in the August of two thousand nineteen, in the current program, which is about midway down the page, sport field to apply roundup plus pre-emergent to infills to suppress weeds.
And this is.
And then if you look at the organic program, it's sports field to apply Axe, organic weed suppressant to infills. Uh, so it's a swap of, but I don't, I don't know, like you, like you said, what's, what's in the organic component, you know, what?
Yeah, I, I, it'd be good to, it'd be good to know that, and there was one, there's.
My feeling, for what it's worth, um, on this is, I don't think we have enough time to go through and debate all this. I'd go with last year's plan, basically, with the old, the old way of doing it, and look into it more for ne- for next year.
I, I'm gonna have.
But I mean, that's, that's just my way of.
Yeah. I mean, Roundup to me is o- off the table entirely. I'm one, I'm only one vote, but I won't even, I'm not even, I'm done, Roundup is, I mean, the entire, there is now a second state on the docket to eliminate it from there. Entire, you know, I, I'm just, it's, it's, it's. It's bad.
I think life's it's bad.
And I don't know, the areas, I'm gray, I'll admit, on the areas they're planning on using the Roundup on, and what they wanna do with it, it sounded, and I may misunderstand, I have understood this, but it sounded to me like they're planning on using the Roundup instead of weed whacker, and a lot of it, uh, will kill off stuff rather than trim it and cut it.
Yeah, I think the, not to interrupt you, I think the, the typical use in the past has been, there's been two spots, really, that get applied to. One's the fence line.
Yep.
Because it does minimize the number of times you have to go around and weed whack something. The other is primarily in the infield sections, you know, the, what I would call the dirt sections, where people run. Um, to eliminate the grass there, so it's, uh, um, not, you know, playing a grass field or a weed field. Um, there also is the, the areas around the bleachers that had, had been treated. Um, we can certainly get more information concerning the products, so that I think it, it's just kind of trying to attempt to get the questions from you folks, so that we can give you the answers you need to, um, have the information to make the informed choice. Um, and then there's also the question of, can you do it manually? Yes, you could, but.
According to what cost?
It's a lot of, a lot of picking grass, but. Um, in terms of the fertilizer application, I, I can ask them for information if that's of interest.
Right, that's.
You know, what's, what's the difference between, um, you know, twenty-two oh-five, non-organic versus two applications of eight-two-two organic, is one, you know?
Yeah.
Spreading dried cow, you know what, and the other.
Right, 'cause that one could be not nearly as big a deal, and that's a big, that's a big difference in the price, too.
Yeah, it, it, and I, I think that, one, one of the biggest questions I have is.
Right.
I think absolutely the, um, the, um, the Roundup is off the table. So, with that being said, does the rest of this really look that bad?
You, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right, it's like, maybe, maybe the con- maybe it's just getting the Roundup out of there.
Exactly.
Because, I'm not, I mean.
Full well-known, that if you take the Roundup out of it, somebody's gonna pick up the slack and doing some weeding and, and, you know what I mean? Because if you look, if you go to the, um, if you go to the organic program, once the Roundup is removed, look at what replaces the Roundup. I mean, there's a huge expense there.
Well, it's, what, twenty-two, twenty-three hundred dollars versus what?
But it's applied.
Versus eleven hundred, so it's twice as much.
Oh, the Axe is.
So, I'm, I'm thinking that's what the, what the, um, what Laidly wanted to have the conversation about one, uh, compared to the other.
Oh, you, oh, for the, you, the, the, the big, the big, the, the big, the bigger price differences in the fertilizers.
Correct.
Right, and that, right, and that's, yeah, I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if the right thing doesn't lie between these two. And, and that it might actually be closer to the current program, money-wise.
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, you know, the reason, the only reason I, you know, for me, it's, you know, the organic versus the inorganic in terms of the fertilizer and stuff. I mean, we're not eating off of it, and it's not like, and, and I'm not sure, you know, I'm not hearing, there isn't a two-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar lawsuit that just got settled against these chemicals that are in that product. You know, I'm not gonna go on speculation, you know?
Yeah.
When there's a, a lawsuit that comes out that says, yeah, we know this is causing cancer, it's poisoning people, and you can't use this fertilizer, I mean, well, that's a different conversation. But we do know this about glyphosate, and we know that it's doing real harm, and that the entire state of New York so far, and I don't know if there's more states, but have outlawed it on school grounds, you know? And I just think that that's something that you can't ignore, and, you know, when the, you know, when the science is there, and the evidence is there, and the red flags go up, and our children are involved, you know, you just, that's a cost worth bearing. But, you know, until there is that kind of evidence for all these other things, I don't know that it's, you know, a reasonable expense to put on the town to say, well, you know. Yeah, and if it were food, maybe it'd be a different story, you know, if we were growing corn over there, we might be going, I don't know, you know, that's for another personal choice. But for me personally, you know, I, I, I feel, I'm, I feel very strongly with the Roundup, and I'm not, and I'm not so attached to the other, to the other organic, uh, you know, expenses there, in terms of what's right for the town, anyway, that's.
Well, if we're, if we're going to, uh, wait for the return of the other two board members, um, I can get from sports fields the difference of these things, that's so we can have some actual data sheets, for lack of a better word. Um, and also, should I confirm with the, um, school, the ability to do some of this aeration and that type of thing on a timely basis?
That's a very good question, and that's what I was hoping for, that a, regardless of which way we were gonna go, I was hoping that the Rec Committee would have, have their representative to the school sit down with the, with the, a representative up there at the school, and, and just go line item by line item. Sports, sports fields is to airate in two directions. You know, is the school capable of doing this? Keeping in mind, we're gonna go away from, we're gonna go away from Roundup, that's gonna create more labor. You, you know, this, this was part of my conversation early on.
Yeah. With, well, let me, let me take on, in the coming two weeks, I'll reach out to the principal and coordinate with him, and then invite the Rec Committee or the representative of the Rec Commission to be present at that meeting, so we can take the sports fields thing and say, sports fields, Lincolnville Central School, Rec Committee, whoever. I mean, they, they laid out the plan, sports field is more than willing to do. I mean, they, they laid out the plan. Sports field is more than willing to do.
Yeah.
You know, they're a contractor, they'll do what you contract with them for or what you don't.
Right.
Um, but they won't, we asked them to put forth this plan so we knew the time that it should be done and what should be done.
Exactly.
And it doesn't do us any good to go out and aerate the fields in December. So we need to make sure we have the commitment that it'll be done on a timely basis.
Yeah.
Following this schedule. And if it can't, then we'll have to say back to you folks, it can't be done in July. Um, do you wanna wait till August or do we want to have sports fields do it? And then we can put who it's assigned to and the cost.
Yeah. My, my concern, and, and that's, that's, unfortunately, David, that's what I was looking for.
Yep.
Um, and unfortunately, again, um, I think there's probably, you're probably gonna be met with some frustration because of numerous meetings, um, uh, that have already happened. Um, and, you know, I get it, that the school can't get to it, get on the, the, uh, fields up there when it's wet. And when it's wet is probably the time when it's convenient for them. When the time comes that you can get on the field, they don't necessarily or aren't necessarily gonna have the time to do it. So I understand the frustration on both sides of it. And there's a number of reasons why that happened, water on the field being one of them. Um, but I just, I, I, I feel bad that you're probably gonna be met with some frustration, but.
That's all right. We, we all, I think we, everybody has the same goal in mind.
Yeah.
Which is a nice set of fields for the community to use. And who cares who's, who cares if Dave Kenny's fr- frustrated, you know? I've got that same goal. It's just, we need to make sure that we have a plan that has buy-in from all the parties and where we have gaps, we'll have to fill that in with a contractor. And let's just, you know, sit down with a plan and here's the task at hand. Who's doing it on this time?
Yeah.
Can you do it? No. Can we do it? No.
Okay.
We'll find a contractor that can. Check. Who's doing, who's doing the next thing? You, me, contractor, you know, check.
Right.
And then we have an assignment, we know the cost, we know where we don't have the cost, and it'll be done.
I think that maybe when we're putting this together and while we're talking to everybody, I hate doing this, but maybe we ought to add a little extra. We're gonna take some out of this, 'cause w- then right now it's not figuring, I don't believe in much of anything, schools doing, sports fields doing it all, so whatever. The school's gonna be taken out, we ought to leave some of that money in there so that, like Karen was saying, if things happen and we have to hire it out, we've got money in the budget to do it, and if it's left over for next year, that's great. And, but I'm, I'm just afraid, I don't wanna see us having to do a special town meeting, raise a little bit more money because the school couldn't do it, it rained this too much this spring and the work needs to be done and the money's not there. I don't, I'm not saying fund all of what we've got planned for sports fields, but maybe twenty-five cent more than what you need or some, some figure that you can pull out of the air that would cover that.
Well, you can, we can, we can add a contingency to it, or you can take it from your own contingency.
Right, I mean, I, right, just for that, because I'm afraid the schools say, yes, we can do this, 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 and this with no problem. And if the weather doesn't cooperate with them and the field still needs to get taken care of, there's money coming from.
Yep.
So, I'm just, uh, so if we go down to the, in, in early twenty nineteen.
Are you on the current program page or the?
No, I'm, yeah, current program.
Organic. Okay, yep.
Okay. So, in, let's see.
April, May?
April, dimension crab grass control. Sports field to apply dimension crab grass control, which is a fertilizer. Okay, and they're also to apply turf, turfess MVP infield conditioner to infills, okay. Then in June.
And that's the same in both?
Correct. So in June, sports field to spray millennium broadleaf control, which we don't see any, we don't see any application of Roundup until August?
Right.
Right, August is the first spot.
Okay, so full well knowing, we're not gonna use Roundup. And looking at the rest of this, unless Josh or Laidly, or maybe some of this information that you come get from sports field is glaringly, oh my god, we can't use this? You, you, you know what I'm saying? I mean, all it's gonna do.
Right, right.
All this is gonna do by not, a- and it's gonna, I say all it's gonna do. It's gonna, it's gonna create more work to trim, basically is what it is, and more maintenance on, on, on the dirt part of the infield to keep the, keep the weeds from growing.
Unless that Axe organic weeds present works really good.
Yeah, but.
I mean, I, you never, I.
So I'm, it's, okay, so I'm not, uh, maybe we're overthinking this?
Right, it might, right.
Because you've got a six thousand, six thousand dollar difference, uh, between the two plans.
Yep.
And it would be more than that if we just didn't use Roundup, if that's all we need to not use.
If, if that's the only thing, it's only like a seven or eight hundred dollar difference, isn't it? Or is there two, there is another application of Roundup somewhere?
No, there's a, wasn't there two, there's one application a year, isn't there?
That's been the.
Oh, the, oh, August, yeah.
That's been the current program.
Yeah.
Although I think we skipped a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, I think we have.
But.
All right. Okay, this may not be as bad as I thought it was.
I think, I think I've got the, or we've got a good, uh, a good plan to get the material safety data sheets or whatever else on the, um.
And there was one other, there was one other chemical, I guess, that Josh had been working with somebody, um, one of the fellows he was working with, somebody, he mentioned, I can't remember the name of the other, but there was, I don't know if it's in, I don't know if it's in any of this stuff, but there, it was one other thing that I, he was, wanted to call attention to. I can't, I, but I, I don't, I'm not even sure that, so, yeah, I mean, I, there.
That's another good reason to push this to the next meeting.
Yeah, their input is, is, I think, pretty important in this particular one.
Okay.
I can certainly reach out to Selectman Garrettson to say, in addition to the Roundup, what?
John mentioned, you had mentioned the chemical, is that part of what's in?
He may be tuning in, watching us from wherever he is at the moment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That would be good to know again.
To say.
Okay.
Josh.
What else, David?
Other, um, was this quickly looking?
Start from these chemicals.
Huh?
These ca- all these chemicals, questions for this.
Ah, I know. I know.
Uh, protection, town office, we had it in, contingency, safety, security. Um, probably continue with all the, all the recreation stuff at the next meeting, including the, yes, okay? Um, the others, where's the committee put back in? What is that one? What is that? Uh, sorry, I don't know. I think it was just down to, unless there was something else that jumped off somebody else's page. I think the only blanks that we had left in here were, were all the recreation activities.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Was there a question about, I can't remember if it came out in the last meeting, but, uh, I don't, I don't recall from the stuff I was hearing, but it, was there, I had a discussion with somebody, well, I'm gonna point out the, the question is of the equipment, of pickleball equipment being privately, or how, how does that work? Uh, there was the same sort of discussion with the, um, the weed whacker, you know, when, um, Leslie came in. So it would be great if the town had a weed whacker, and then, you know, of course, there's the list of, well, where does it get stored and who?
Yeah.
Well, we had, we'd, in, in terms of some of those things, uh, the board had made a decision on the weed whacker and the storage racks, and I'm trying to think of what the other ones were. If I could get to the right page, I'd tell you exactly. Um, we made those changes that the board had requested. The other issue of the pickleball had been a little, we, we didn't, the board didn't make a decision and they'd asked for some additional information, which is hard to get when the tennis courts are covered with snow, and I used.
Ah.
Um, so that's still in limbo land. Um, let's see, what did you done last time? The dog bags, the storage rack, the weed whacker, the ice rescue ladder, we just, or you just put zeros in.
Oh, right, right, okay, that, yeah, I remember that.
And that, and the zeros have been carried in there. The other, at some point here on the, um, whether it be tonight or at the next meeting, you're gonna make a decision on whether or not you're gonna fund the, uh, purchase of equipment and the striping. I don't think that the court is ready to be, or necessary for resurfacing.
Yeah.
At the moment. Um, 'cause it's been six months since I've been out there to look, but.
The, uh, the conversation at our last budget for, uh, uh, about budgets and I have under pickleball, uh, the taped paddle balls, resurface and repaint, um. I crossed that out.
The, the gear got cr-.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I thought it was kinda, I, I got the sense it was heading in a direction, is it the, okay?
Yeah, the gear. Yeah. And we, I wrote to be deter- someone had a ten thousand dollar request in there and I put TBD under that. We need to, um, you know, figure out whether, what, what the actual condition is, uh, whether it just needs to be restriped for now and then get an estimate to resurface and then see if we're gonna spread that over three, three years or so.
Right, that's right.
And then develop a maintenance plan for every five or whatever that was.
That's right.
Um, but the, the striping, I think if, if it, I think it was the board's o- opinion that if restriping it would make it, um, make it more viable for people using it, then we would restripe it by someone who, who does that, um, you know, for, for a living, I guess. Um, and also incorporate the pickleball, uh, guidelines in there so it can be a multi-use core. But that's, that's all I can decipher from my notes for right now. We didn't have a figure in there.
No, well, the initial, uh, work that had come from the group that had been working with pickleball and the rec had kind, had three options to meet within it, which was one for repainting or painting the, the court lines. And then there was a, a greater effort at resurfacing and then painting. And then a, let's see, and then the, um, or painting of the pickleball by volunteers with a little bit of money put into it. And resurfacing was guesstimated over the phone at eighty-five hundred to fourteen thousand, which is quite a spread. Um, painting was eight hundred to fourteen hundred and volunteer painting was a hundred and twenty. I don't, the last time I was on the courts and I was looking at the stripes, there's no doubt that after its time over there, it's faded and it's pitted some. Um, we don't feel complaints from tennis players about the inability to see the markings. Um, I'm, I'm kind of of the mind to suggest.
Where you go somewhere and look at it.
Yeah, to suggest if you're, um, concerned, that if you wanna start a pickleball effort, that we actually do some, we plan for some striping. And then when black flies are out, that we actually evaluate what we have over there. That doesn't help us much in the budget time. I don't think it, the court surfaces are gonna deteriorate to the point with another year that it's gonna be catastrophic to us. I'm not sure if you wanna try to make that decision with the three of you, or since we're gonna have a quite a recreation discussion at the next meeting.
No, yeah, right.
Save it for the five of you, but your preference.
Okay, so we all, all set on the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget deliberations as far as we know?
So, i- ev- if, is everybody else, uh, with the exception of athletic fields and Laidly's desire to change it, the other one to athletic infrastructure maintenance? Ev- everything else satisfactory? We didn't miss anything that you're aware of? So just to give you a status, kind of where we are at the moment, um, you're what, forty, well, round numbers, forty-two thousand dollars less to the taxpayer for the municipal budget. This, where your recommendations are, there was, now, we do have a substantial amount of money gonna be possibly put into the, uh, ballfield maintenance, but you're on the good, you're on the plus side.
Decent track to be on.
If you look at that, that could be just, say, in twenty thousand dollars.
Yep, you'll still be.
We're still twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so pretty good there.
Yeah, you'll, yeah.
So this next meeting, not only will we have the conversation about, uh, we'll probably have a more, I mean, an in-depth conversation about the rec, uh, budget and, and make our recommendation there. Um, but we'll also go through the budget one more time, just in case we have other questions.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's all, in, until you, and, well, actually, until you sign the warrant.
Yeah.
Your recommendations can change anytime you, you wanna get together. I just, obviously, the closer we can get to where you wanna be, sooner the better, because you, you'll be making changes or inserting things on the twenty-fifth, and then it's scheduled to go to the budget committee on the twenty-sixth, so, you know, we'll have all of twenty-two hours to make those changes, which we can do.
We're all set on that?
I think so.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda, item number sixteen. Building tour regarding office space, burn justice and assistant grant program?
Yeah, I think we probably, um, unless you think differently, Mr. Chair, could send Melissa home and I don't think we're gonna have any other votes besides to adjourn after this tour and, and executive session, if we have that executive session, so I can take the minutes for that, we can send Melissa home and.
Melissa, would you like to go home early?
No. I'm sure there's something waiting at home for me to do.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Shall I flip the switch and we head for a walking tour?
I, I'm thinking we should.
All right.